Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, maybe even a third, right? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. We will start today's meeting with a couple of presentations. Um, the first of those presentations will be from our public library. And that's going to be presented by Director Hatch. Thank you.
Hey, just want to make sure you can hear me. Yes, thank you so much. Um, I, Councilor, thank you so much for allowing me to present today. I'm very excited to share with you um, some data around uh, trends in libraries. Um, a lot has changed since the pandemic. I wanted to be able to share the results of our master facilities plan and overview of our findings. And a look at our 2024 um, priorities. One second. How do I go back? Alright, perfect. Thank you, sorry about that. Um, so for those of you who don't know, we do have three locations. Um, I wanted to, for those of you who are not aware, that we actually have three locations in Upper Arlington. Um, I wanted to provide a little bit of background um, for each of these locations. Understanding that Tremont is our largest uh, location, it's about sixty thousand square feet. Um, uh, sometimes I'd get asked, you know, wow, that's a lot of libraries for just a small area. And so I tried to explain it as in, well, we have lots of grocery stores, same way we have libraries. So think of Tremont, um, it has uh, tons of everything, pretty much everything you can find, just like Giant Eagle. Lane Road is our mid-sized location. Um, we have specialized collections, a meeting room, a very active early learning play area. And it caters the local community with a little bit of everything like Littleton's. And Miller Park is our smallest location, primarily serving youth and families. Um, we like to think of it as sweet and specialized, just like the goodie shop. So some of the trends that I wanted to share with you, these are really because these are things that impact um, our building renovations. Uh, so understanding first, um, our user visits, um, if you look at the colors, so twenty nineteen is in brown. So that is pre-pandemic and then green is twenty twenty-three as of last year. So we have seen about a twenty-one percent drop in user visits per month. Um, that's due to a few different reasons. Um, some of it being that people don't visit as regularly as they used to. We've been looking at sort of trends and the average, average user visits the library about every three to six months. Um, and that's due to them not needing certain things the way that they used to. Whether it's public computer access, they have their own devices now, or they don't need their weekly movie fix the way that they used to. Um, but we have seen, if you look um, two over, our program attendance was at a record high last year. Um, we saw almost a thirty percent increase in program attendance. We made a huge investment into our programming uh, budget. And we can see that our checkouts are up twenty-four percent, which these are individual checkouts, so first time checkouts. Um, so, but renewals do factor into that. So basically, you know, people are not renewing things as much as they used to. But those number of checkouts, and I'll be able to show you which collections have really skyrocketed within the last year. And the other thing I wanted to mention is we don't have as much computer use as we used to. Um, but what we do need is access to power for those device users. I mean, that's not to say that we don't need computers at all, um, but we do, we won't need as many of them as we have right now. Okay. So these are some statistics from over the years to kind of show you trends in libraries and, and in our libraries specifically on the collections that are circulating and checking out really well and ones that have sort of declined. So you can see that our print checkout has surpassed most years, several years past. So adult book out, checkouts and especially juvenile book checkouts are at the highest that they've ever been even since twenty sixteen. Um, but you can see where we see the drop is in our movie checkouts, um, audiobooks and music. Now, obviously that's due to a lot too streaming. Um, but I would also mention that with our movies, um, we aren't able to purchase as much as we used to because the movie industry just isn't putting them out on DVD and Blu-ray the way that they had in previous years. Um, we've reduced the number of copies that we're buying of movies, but we still are able to buy the brand new bestsellers to make sure that we still have them. But the one area that I really wanted to show you that has completely taken off is our digital circulation. And that's another reason why we're not seeing as much of the traffic. So we have about twenty-four thousand active cardholders um, in, in Upper Arlington. And uh, four thousand of those are primarily digital users. They access the library on their phone. Um, so if you have Libby, Canopy, Hoopla, so the library is at your fingertips. In twenty twenty-two, we did a usability study, um, right before, um, we hired HBM architects and interior designers to understand how people were using our buildings. So over the course of two weeks, twice in that year, one in the, one in the summer and then one in the fall. Um, we went around every hour and had staff tracking, you know, where, where are people sitting? What are they doing? Are they in groups? Are they alone? Um, and understanding, you know, are they reading? Are they working? Uh, are they on a laptop? Just to kind of understand um, how the space was being utilized. So you can see right here, what you're looking at is a heat map of our adult, uh, adult uh, services space at the Tremont location. Um, as you can see, that's where the majority of our collection is. And um, but the red zones are the hotspots. Those are where, where the most activity is happening. And those are all study spaces. Those are study carols, those are group seating spaces, study tables, and then the Hudson Quiet Reading Room in the back. Um, those, we just do not have enough space. Um, we're at capacity for seating and, and group study. Um, what we're not seeing is much browsing of our collection. Um, the yellow is uh, just a medium uh, use of space. That is um, part of our adult collection and the green as well. So again, we know that we need to expand to add meeting rooms and study space. We definitely need uh, flexible open spaces for large programs. Um, we have uh, our atrium, for those of you who've been in the Tremont space. Um, we have our big, large, noisy programs usually going on in that area, which unfortunately is right next to the same place that where people are trying to study and read. Um, so it's not the most conducive um, in that way. So we know when we need to move things around that we have to, to think about that. Um, we don't have as much need for public computers, but we definitely need more power and seating for laptop users. Um, our buildings were not built with the use that we see happening today. Um, so we need to, to remedy that. And then just understanding, we need to curate our collections for the needs of the community, which means a better balance of meeting, seating and shelving. So in twenty twenty-three, we hired HBM architects and interior designers to come in and do a facilities assessment. Um, understanding and, and getting information around major repairs or replacements. But we also um, contracted with them to do staff and community engagement sessions. We wanted to know from the community and from our staff, um, what's important to you? What do you think we need? And here are some of the overall themes that we heard. Um, so one was they really feel strongly about maintaining the inviting and warm feel of our libraries, making sure that they are not sterile. Um, that they love, you know, all of the books when you walk in, um, so making sure that we maintain that feeling. Um, definitely the need for study and meeting rooms, access to power. Um, making sure that we can have flexible spaces so that we can adjust with different community needs. Um, we've heard overwhelming um, praise for our children's and family spaces. The two early learning play areas that we added, one at Lane and one at Tremont are, are incredibly popular and they want more. More play area, more programming, um, more space for youth and families. Um, need for a business center. People come to the library, um, they do use the computer, but they need a lot of help with printing and using the computer. And so a need for a business center, which is essentially where someone can come in and get help with making copies and printing things and scanning things um, is something that they're looking for. Um, they still love our collections and they want to make sure they still have access. Um, and we were told that we, they would love covered outdoor seating uh, for reading and programs, but we shouldn't duplicate park functions. So we're very aware. Uh, so HBM prioritized the recommendations, um, and I'll talk about the budget here in, in a little bit about how we're planning on um, prioritizing and paying for some of these projects. Um, the priority one was to create a new layout for improved functionality um, at Lane Road. Um, we have to uh, adapt to changes in how patrons are using that building. Um, and I'll show you how we came up, um, how, how we came up to that decision when we met with the board as well. Um, Tremont Road, uh, definitely need a new layout for improved weight finding and functionality. Capturing uh, underutilized spaces and redoing those, definitely need updates to all finishes and furnishings and equipment. Um, if you go into our UA archives and you look at a picture of the lower level from the nineteen seventies, it looks about the same. So needing to freshen up things, um, and, but still understanding that people love that space and they enjoy using that space, but we do need to do some upgrades. Um, desperately need uh, two to four person study rooms and large flexible event space. And then just um, different options, we need mobile options for Miller Park. We don't really plan on expanding the footprint of that building, um, but we know that programming is very popular there. So we need to be able to move things out of the way in order to accommodate. So the budget, um, we uh, met with, when we met with the board in February, one of the other things we looked at, and we always keep our eye on our ten-year forecast. Um, we're so appreciative of the community um, for passing our levy in twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three was the first year of levy collection. We transferred one point two million dollars into our building improvement fund just to pay for the major repairs that we have this year. If you look at the, the um, the line versus building periodic maintenance and replacement, you can see that we have one point nine million dollars in repairs slated just for this year. Uh, nine hundred thousand dollars of that is just fixing the roof at Tremont. So we made a promise of the community that the, a lot of our money that we received from the levy was going to go into fixing our buildings. And that's exactly what we're going to do. Um, we are going to be sending, spending some money in equipment. Um, we're replacing our HVAC uh, systems, um, and some other things. And obviously professional services to pay for the, uh, some of the architectural services. So as you follow the, the budget line over, you can see that we have planned um, one point two to one million dollars in tapering off to the, towards the end of the levy in order to pay for these projects. So if you look at all the way to the end of our levy cycle, and this is subtracting the two to five years maintenance items and the six to ten years maintenance items, we should have about nine point three million dollars to be able to pay for um, renovations uh, of the, our other buildings. So our, the board and administration met in February of this year to prioritize our projects, understanding, you know, and kind of understanding cost, how much time these things will take and what the community impact would be. So obviously for twenty twenty-four, the number one priority was to fix all of our urgent maintenance repairs and replacements. Um, followed by the Lane Road uh, first floor reconfiguration, we're calling it the Lane Road Improvement Project. The reason why that project was selected first was because we knew we were going to be replacing all the HVAC of that building and ripping out the entire ceiling. So while that construction is being done, if we have an opportunity to replace the shelving and move things around to make it better, um, let's go ahead and do that at the same time. Um, knowing that a Tremont Road renovation is going to be much more costly. So we are planning for a Miller Park flexible floor plan um, between twenty-five and twenty-eight. Tremont Road reconfiguration renovation. So basically, we would like to hire um, an architect design firm to come in and give us more drilled down specific estimates so that we know we have options. Um, I'll show you a diagram of what HBM architects gave us. And you'll understand why we need to do this process a little bit more in depth and a little bit more in detail and get very drilled down costs. And then provide those options to the community to see what resonates. Uh, twenty-nine to thirty-two, depending on how much money is left over. Um, Miller Park outdoor feat, space feasibility, we have a lot of outdoor programs and may want to invest into that space to be more conducive for those outdoor programs. Potentially see um, if there could be a Miller Park small expansion. Um, again, it's not a, a major priority. Uh, we, it was discussed an expansion of Lane Road, um, but just as, so you're aware, uh, two miles north of Lane Road, Columbus Metropolitan Library is going to be building a branch. And so we want to wait to see what that is going to, how that's going to impact our library use with a library that close. Where I don't want to make millions of investments into a building and have the use go down. So a summary of just Lane Road. Um, I wanted to share some information because this is going to be um, quite a very different look for Lane Road. Um, and it is a beloved branch for our community. And so this is what um, we heard from our staff and from the community uh, that they, it's, it functions well for its size, um, divided into two floors, um, but updates are needed. They recommend reconfiguring the main level. Um, we need quiet study and tutor rooms um, on the first and lower level and needing storage to support adult and children's programs. So here is um, an example. So up at the very top, that is the diagrams that HBM architects gave us. They're sort of just space adjacencies and bubbles. So these are very general diagrams of what they would suggest we do with our buildings. And so this year after, when we got those results, um, and just, uh, just as a, um, I wanted to point out, which I know it's not in this slide. Um, but HBM Architects and Interior Designers quoted this project and a reconfiguring or redesign of Lane Road to be about one point nine million dollars. And we're going to be making some really incredible improvements for a third of the cost. Um, so which is why I feel very confident that we can work within our budget. Okay. I'm going to keep going, okay? So, um, so what we did was, um, we, we bid out the HVAC and the uh, roof replacement in the building of two small study rooms on the first floor. Um, all of those repairs and replacements are the five hundred fifty thousand dollars that you see up at the top. Um, and then we hired Library Design, which is a design firm that specifically works with libraries on furnishings. And so um, they are going to be able to replace all the shelving and all of the furniture um, on the first floor for about two twenty-five. Uh, so that is the floor plan um, that Library Design gave us and how things will look. Um, so you'll see that we have our fiction and nonfiction adult collections on the right-hand side. A teen space with seating for tutors and for teens to come in and work. Um, and the youth collection, we will still have a Friends book sale, um, but it will be off of the carts in front of the stairwell and they will be on the wall and they will look very nice and clean. And then our, on the left-hand side, we'll have new books, large print, all in mobile units so that we can adjust things as we need to. We will still have um, six computers, but we're also putting in a laptop bar and our two study spaces and a copy and print area uh, for people to use. So just understanding space allocation. So right now, fifty-four percent of Lane Road is shelving. Um, it doesn't leave a lot of room for people to come in and sit and work and read and be together. And so we had to make some decisions, understanding that Tremont is the, is the location where we can house a lot, much larger collection. That Lane Road size just isn't conducive to having a very in-depth collection. So you can get anything from Tremont delivered to Lane Road. So making those, those adjustments, we're able to increase um, our seating and meeting room uh, capacity at that location, which I think is going to be um, very welcome. So here is a picture of the Lane Road rendering. This was given to us by Triad Architects um, to kind of show you the new ceiling design. Um, right now, the ceiling is pretty much just tiles, um, and a soffit that goes all the way around. Um, what we're going to be doing with the ceiling in this case is having sound baffling treatments to help with um, noise reduction. Um, way much, way more seating options than we have currently on a very uh, open and bright uh, floor plan. So our timeline for this project, right now, we're in the process of uh, weeding the collection, um, understanding what, if items need to move to Tremont. Um, moving our items, curating the collection for the Lane Road um, opening day. Um, we're going to start to move things around to the lower level to prepare for, for construction in November. And then the Lane Road branch will be closed in December for the renovation, HVAC ceiling and shelving and furniture. It's all going to happen at once. Um, I also did want to mention that the Friends of the Library gave us thirty-seven thousand dollars to replace all the picture book shelving in the lower level and some additional children's items. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our friends, they're incredibly supportive of us. Um, and then in January, hopefully, knock on wood, uh, we will have a grand reopening uh, next year. So again, just to kind of recap, um, relocating items to Tremont, um, because we have more capacity at that location. Um, but that means that we can add more meeting space and increase seating capacity at Lane Road. Um, this, there's some pictures of some of the newer furniture options that we've added at Tremont that we hope to in, invest in at Lane Road as well. So um, my final slide, this is just to kind of understand our process. Um, first, you know, we get a detailed design of different options when it comes to renovation, multiple cost estimates and options, then we survey and engage with the community to see again what resonates and what we can afford. Um, if the community wants something and we, we haven't, that's not something we're going to be able to do. There's an optional um, fundraising component if needed. Um, then construction uh, documents and bidding, and then renovate and construct. So that's sort of the timeline. It's a very long process. I've had to remind myself that because I want things done really fast and it's not, obviously that's not how it works. That's it.
Thank you, Director Hatch. Do I have any questions for my colleagues?
Yes.
Councilmember months?
Thank you, Director Hatch for the proposal. I'm really excited about these improvements. I've been reading over this past week about potential drop in funding in the state of Ohio for libraries. So at the very end there, you mentioned the possibility of having to do some fundraising if we couldn't afford the capital improvement projects that the citizens want. Do you have any idea how likely that might be? How concerned are you about potential overall drops in funding?
Um, so right now, that's a great question. Thank you so much. Um, we have noticed, uh, and Ohio Library Council um, is very aware and has been giving us updates on the Public Library Fund. We have seen about a thirty thousand drop and just in our estimates alone. We are very fortunate with the passage of our levy, um, that we are not in the position that some other public libraries are. Dayton Library just had to close on Sundays, um, other libraries are having to make some pretty drastic cuts. Um, hiring freezes and things like that to, to um, offset. A lot of their funding comes from the Public Library Fund. Um, we fortunately are not in such a dire position, um, but we will have to look very carefully at um, at our investments. But we've been able to do it thus far and we're working with more revenue than we had just two years ago. So I think we'll be okay.
Any other council comments? Questions? Councilmember Kuluwitz?
Thank you, President Awakasian Jeter and Director Hatch. Could you expand a little bit on what the, the digital um, content, what digital content is available through the library?
Um, yes, so we have three digital platforms, uh, Overdrive, which is the Libby, it's, it's important, the, Overdrive is the company, Libby is the app. Um, and that provides streaming audiobooks, uh, magazines and um, and ebooks. And uh, it, I can't even tell you what the vast amount that is available through that uh, catalog. Now, we are part of the CLC, the Digital Download Central Library Consortium. So we all pool our resources into that platform. Um, we just made a um, uh, hundred thousand dollar investment into the digital platform um, called Overdrive Advantage, which basically means if you have a UA library card, you get priority access for titles that we purchase. Um, but yeah, ebooks, audiobooks, um, and magazines are available on that. Hoopla is um, no holds, no waiting. Um, but it's much more limited in its catalog. And um, it's another app that you can get on your phone and it's audiobooks, graphic novels, music. Um, and um, but with that platform, we pay per use. So you log in and you have access to the entire catalog um, of, of items that way. And then Canopy is our streaming movie service and it's, it's um, international films and um, things that you might not find on some of your other streaming services. Um, and it's something that we're hoping will get more traction.
Thank you. Yeah, I was struck last year by the uh, what seemed to me to be a, a significant increase in the number of languages being spoken in Upper Arlington and in the houses of Upper Arlington and struck every day by the um, challenges that are, there are opportunities that our children will have to work around the world if they, if they know other languages. I wonder if, how much of the collection is, i- is any part of the collection devoted to the foreign language?
There are, there are foreign language titles in, in Overdrive. And we also um, have a um, a database, um, Mango Languages. Um, that is a, a language service that you can, you can uh, sign up, um, same like Duolingo, but it's something that the library pays for. It's a, it's a much better, more robust uh, language learning app. Thank you.
Vice President Close?
Um, this one's for our own city manager, our law director. Can you explain to our uh, two new council members up here what the interaction is between the city council and the library? Besides the appointment of the board of justices?
So the, and I'll ask, ask for an assist from Director Hatch if I get this wrong. So the, the first thing as you, as you intimated was uh, city council appoints the members of their board and that board serves kind of like city council in terms of the board of directors. Uh, the second thing we do is we have, we as a city council have to pass um, authorization to put their levies on the ballot. So we don't fund them, but they have to go through us to approve placing it on the ballot for the voters to vote on. Did I get that right?
That's right.
And I believe that's, those are the only real connections we have there.
Yeah.
And what they do with their hiring or employees or anything like that.
And I will say that's
The budget once a year?
Hmm?
Don't, do we approve your budget once a year? Or is it, don't, we sign up on something?
Oh, the appropriation, uh, yeah, the appropriation. So actually later on in your agenda, um, we submit our budget to you, which goes that you guys approve.
That's why I found it familiar.
And then just informally, we do talk a lot about whenever there's kind of a joint issue that comes up. Um, kind of the, the triumph, the triangle of us and the schools and, and uh, Director Hatch and her team all work very closely together, just kind of on a day-to-day working basis. In the interest of being thorough, there's probably one more thing worth mentioning, which is the land the library is on is a lease, I believe, from the city, a long-term lease, but technically it's, it's a lease, correct?
A dollar.
Yeah, we're not making any, any money on that.
Well, thank you so much, Director Hatch. I do have a um, a question here to, to add. And I noticed at the beginning of your slide, you talked about usage of the library is, is down. Um, but you're also creating spaces in the library for more interaction or, you know, um, that type of work. Now, how do you anticipate driving? Do you think just innate in the fact that we're going to have more open space for people to use the library? That will increase the usage of the library? Or what are your, what are your thoughts around?
So, yes, that's a great question. So my, our strategy um, to bring people back into the library, um, in the same way that we saw those numbers in twenty nineteen, understanding that they are using it differently is, is exactly right. We're creating the spaces where people want to be, um, knowing we don't have enough. Um, I can tell you our meeting rooms are booked constantly and people have a really hard time getting them because they're reserved months in advance. Um, providing um, programming is going to be another area. We want to be a space where people can come and create memories of a lifetime. And so making sure that we're providing those programs and those weekly story times um, for people to come and to visit. Uh, the other thing that we're working on right now is a collection strategy. Um, current, we are a member of the Central Library Consortium. Um, and everything that we, that we purchase, we share with all the other, like the seventeen other systems in um, in our central Ohio. Um, but what we don't do is what some of the other libraries do, or we do in very small quantities, is where we save a portion of our collection, the new popular items um, to be picked up in our locations. Um, so if someone doesn't know to reserve it, a brand new item could go right out the door. And you wouldn't even know that we bought it and that it exists here um, for our patrons. And because um, our patrons are our, our number one priority, um, we want to make sure that we have some of those items. So what we're hoping is by portioning aside some of our collection for what we're calling quick picks, um, is that we will have brand new titles available for people right when you come in the door and it'll cause incentive in that kind of um, too hot to hold kind of way to get people to come into the buildings. You never know what you might find.
Yeah. Um, and I have one additional question in my, uh, this one's from my daughter. She wanted to make sure that I, that I asked this question. We are, we are avid users of the Lane Road Library. I think our libraries are one of the many gems that we have in our community. I'm particularly fond of the Lane Road Library because just proximity wise. Uh, we love the lower level with the children's um, uh, section there. Uh, my daughter's a preteen, she's, she's eleven, uh, going on twenty-one. But uh, her, her, her question was, well, you know, and her vantage point is Lane Road and she sees a lot of programming for early readers and little children. And uh, she's curious, uh, and, because I thought it was a good one and I was like, I'm not sure. Because I, you know, they were both babies and I don't know how she became eleven. Uh, but what do we have for programming for teens and preteens? Uh, and as we, again, I know we have fantastic programming for early learners and early childhood. That space, when they are still interested in books, um, and if parents are still able to get them to the library, what's happening in that space?
Yeah, so we have increased our teen programming by fifty percent, um, just within the last couple of years. Um, I know that they are, we were actually short-staffed at Lane Road for, for youth programming. Um, we recently uh, hired a youth education specialist on top of our librarian to come in and specifically Um, we recently uh hired a youth education specialist on top of our librarian to come in and specifically do programs. I know one of the programs that they're offering, which I don't know if she'd be interested, is a um resin-making craft. You can make a paperweight with resin. Um, so we're definitely adding things, um, craft programs and things like that for teens um so that they can come in and, and use the space as well. And if there's any programs that she'd be interested in, we're, we're all ears because we want to know what they want.
Harvey, I hope you're listening. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, and I do want to uh thank you and your, your staff. I see some of your staff here uh for, for all the work that you do uh with the libraries for our community. I'm excited to hear your uh, your master plan. So thank you.
Thank you so much.